Roll call, please.
Hatchet?
Here.
Ginn?
Here.
Hebbeth White?
Here.
Smith?
Present.
Alexander?
Here.
Burris?
Here.
Grayson?
Here.
By the opening prayer by Charlie and the pledge by John.
Let's everybody bow and pray. Father, we're a grateful community. Thank you for our capable staff, our leadership, our protective services, those that are helping others, and a community that stays concerned, and is a blessing in so many, many ways. We ask that you be with us as we decide on some matters this evening, and maybe it may be in a spirit that is pleasing to you in your kingdom. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
By the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Move on to citizen comments, which we didn't have any, correct? We'll jump to council communications. We'll start with Judge Schaff, and we'll administer the police officer's oath of office to Cameron Anderson.
Raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. I, Cameron Nicole Anderson.
Cameron Nicole Anderson.
Having been duly appointed as a police officer of the city of Chickasha.
As a police officer of the city of Chickasha.
County of Grady.
County of Grady.
State of Oklahoma.
State of Oklahoma.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will defend.
That I will defend.
Enforce.
Enforce.
And obey.
And obey.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
State of Oklahoma.
State of Oklahoma.
And the ordinances of the city of Chickasha.
And the ordinances of the city of Chickasha.
I will obey the lawful orders.
I will obey the lawful orders.
Of my superior officers.
Of my superior officers.
And the requirements.
And the requirements.
And regulations of the city of Chickasha.
And regulations of the city of Chickasha.
And the police department.
And the police department.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
My duties.
My duties.
And responsibilities.
And responsibilities.
As a citizen.
As a citizen.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
On my honor.
On my honor.
I will never betray.
I will never betray.
My badge.
My badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have courage.
I will always have courage.
To hold myself and others.
To hold myself and others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
This, I do solemnly swear.
This, I do solemnly swear.
This first day of December.
This first day of December.
2025.
2025.
Thank you.
All right, let's go to the fire department promotion ceremonies. John Seiler promotion to captain, and Justin Allen's promotion to driver.
Mayor, council members, Mr. Crosby, and citizens of Chickasha, our mission statement states, "The Chickasha Fire Department shall strive to be a well-trained team and empathetic professionals. We will be constantly improving to best serve our community. We are committed to saving lives and protecting property through innovative tactics and training while creating a culture of teamwork and servitude." John Seiler and Justin Allen both exemplify what it means to be Chickasha firefighters by living our mission statement on and off duty daily. I could not be prouder of their heart, determination, and dedication to their family, citizens of Chickasha, and the Chickasha Fire Department. Mayor, council, and Mr. Crosby, I am proud to present to you Captain John Seiler and Driver Justin Allen. Just so you guys all know, they studied for almost ninety days for this promotional exam, probably read close to ten thousand pages apiece from books, so they put a lot of hard work and dedication into bettering themselves and to bettering our community and our department. These guys deserve another round of applause.
We'll give everybody a second to run for the hills. All right, move on to item four. Oh, yep, thank you. Council communications.
I want to say well done to a promise kept to the city manager and the city staff for putting up the net on Sixteenth Street. I know it's been a large concern for the residents there with golf balls hitting their houses, yards, and cars, and it's fixed now. Well done.
Thank you, sir. Charlie, go ahead. Ready for motion?
I had two constituents that reached out to me today, and one of them had contacted me about Austin Park, which is on the north side of town by the technology center. And what she was saying, it's a mom with two young kiddos, and she was saying that there's just two swings and a basketball goal, and that it used to be nicer, used to have more, but being as that's the closest park to their house, that she either has to drive to Shannon Springs or to the east side part because that the other, you know, the north side one is just not sufficient with the two swings. So she just asked if I could bring that to everybody's attention, maybe we could look at that. And then the other one had contacted me about the fairly new housing addition off of Country Club, which was, which is Shadow Valley, and they said that people are speeding through there, and they were wondering if there's something that we could help them with to deter the speeders whenever there's, you know, kiddos and pets and things of that nature out there, and they just don't want to see an accident happen.
Within Shadow Valley?
Yes, in through, through, yeah, in the neighborhood.
That's a huge traffic area.
Yeah.
Just by the amount of people that live in that neighborhood.
And there's quite a few, you know, law enforcement that live in that area, and so I was just kind of surprised that people apparently are just really speeding through there.
Well, now that we're going to have a work session on speeds and stop signs and stuff like that after the first of the year, so we can throw that on the list of stuff to talk about.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Is it too late to add?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Inasmuch as Austin Park, I agree with the lady. I think it's a step ahead of Ritchie Park for amenities. I don't think Ritchie Park has very much going for it over there either. So, and also in the neighborhoods, the city let that addition go, the city approved that addition, built the way it is, with nowhere for children to play, except the street. And we're continuing to approve additions like that without any place for them to go. There's no public space offered in those matters. So every time we approve another addition like that, we're creating more of the same problem, so.
And I don't think it's so much as children playing in the streets is just the way that people are driving through there, and it's just very quick, very fast, so. I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying that the problem was just the speeders, and so there are pets, there are kids, there are cars. I mean, you know, just have to take that into effect.
I feel like everybody on the road behaves themselves better when they see somebody on patrol, a very recognizable thing, so, thank you.
I would like to comment on the Festival Light when it started, and I know that there's been some growing pains with traffic and stuff like that, but from what I've been involved with, the board and the staff's reaction to the complaints have been quick and implemented, reasonable measures have been implemented fairly quickly, so I just want to thank everybody involved, the Festival Light and the board and everybody that's making that happen, and listening to citizen concerns and, you know, doing what they can to mitigate that. They're going to be able to fix the traffic problem, not without many people coming in, but there are things that can be done to try to mitigate the inconvenience, if you will, to the people who live around there.
I have one, kind of a group of citizens have spoken to me about, there's a house on Seventh, and I can give whoever needs it the address, that they have seven or eight large dogs, and they tend to roam the area over there. They've, they get in people's yards, they do all the things that roaming packs of dogs do. And different individuals have called it in. I think they've sought some recourse here and there, but just, they've been kind of told that really nothing can be done unless they see it, unless it's seen by officers. So just, if someone could point me in the right direction, we can do that after the meeting of who this needs to fall to and what all we can do to maybe, before somebody does get hurt, because I believe some of the dogs have been aggressive and would hate to see anyone be hurt before we put a stop to it.
I think it's four.
I've heard up to seven.
I mean, we can have, I think, yeah, ordinance-wise, I think we can have four, as long as they're licensed by the, they have their license, city license. Yeah, so it'd probably be animal control, because we need to bring this attention to Lacy and that crew down there.
And I think that Lacy's been looped in on it. I just don't know if there's been anything she's been able to do yet, you know, so.
Got you.
But I can pass on the communication.
Anybody have anything else? All right, Charlie?
Motion to approve the consent docket with the exception of three items.
With C, D, and E. C, you said C is in Charlie? Charlie, Delta Echo, with C, D, and E. And will you also annotate on item G that there's a typo and it's fiscal year 2526? Let's do that, please. Add that. Add that. Thank you. So we have a motion to approve the consent docket besides Charlie, Delta, Echo, and with the wording on G, change to 2526. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Hatchet?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Hebbeth White?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes.
Item C, from the above, accept the 2026 SAFE grant award for the police department.
Motion to accept the 2026 SAFE Oklahoma Grant Award for the police department.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion and questions, please. Mr. Mayor and Chief, probably the items that they have sent you, that they want to be approved, they brought out a lot of red ink on my review, and one of my first questions is, in the email that they sent you, the part of the last paragraph, they gave some phraseology. Your application was extremely well-written, congratulations on that, but with only so much to award, one of the things that the funding committee looked at was, quote, "How many in the last five years has the agency received funding?" And here's my questions with that, Chief. So they looked at it, huh, what are they telling us? Is it good or bad about that statement? The part about the funding?
I don't.
What do they, what do they care?
I don't believe I understand your question.
Well, it's kind of complicated, and I don't understand their deal either. They act like, well, one of the things we considered was, how many in the last five years you have received funding? Like, oh, maybe Chickasha's already gotten too much, or are they going, no, we like to give to people that want more?
No, both, excuse me, both JAG and the DAC, District Attorney's Council, several years ago, put a policy in process, in place, rather, to where basically if you were awarded grant funds for a consistent five years, okay, then they would take that sixth-year application and move you to the bottom.
Okay, almost like a penalty? So if you've been on?
Almost.
Okay. Kind of like, hey, we've seen you for five years, get in the back of line. That answers, that answered my first question, Chief.
Fair, yes.
Other parts of it, I like the department you lead, I appreciate the work that you and all your staff and officers do for all of us, but I don't trust these agencies that want to be involved with too much in the know about what we do, and it seems like we're turning personnel over to them, we're turning systems over to them in this agreement that even though it's just for a year, it's kind of like, oh, gosh, now, they've been here a year, they've seen our secret sauce, they've seen anything, they've got access that we're sharing with anybody else as well. I'm just fussing about a lot of things in the memorandum.
Okay, so that comment doesn't have anything to do with the SAFE grant? Because I was, in my head, I was still thinking you were talking about the SAFE grant.
Oh, my gosh, I'm on the wrong page. Oklahoma Internet Crimes Against Children's Task Force?
Okay.
Is this, is this part of it?
I thought you were still on the same topic.
I'm speaking of the next item.
Okay.
The SAFE grant was the matter for which, Mr. Mayor?
I think that was what you were asking on, back in the line after five years. I think that was your question regarding that one. Yes.
I'm on page thirty-one where I read that. Was that item four C?
Yeah, that's four C, yeah, and then that's the only page on four C.
Okay, that is the SAFE grant, and then I skipped a page to D. I'm sorry. Sorry for the confusion there. That answers my question on C, so we should be voting.
Okay.
You said that it is in their policy that they do that, though, that every five years you kind of get moved to the bottom of the stack? It's not on a need basis or anything? It's kind of a revolving share of funds or something?
Number one, I've never been to the DAC or the JAG Board whenever they vote, so I'm not going to sit here and pretend that I know every single thing that they discuss when they vote on who gets what. Last year, I believe, we received forty-two thousand five hundred dollars, if I remember correctly, as opposed to Oklahoma City, who got four hundred thousand. I understand that they're a much, much larger municipality, but I've made those arguments over the years that Oklahoma City's sales and use tax and everything else that they've got coming in doesn't equate to my jurisdiction. So the dollar should be higher in the smaller jurisdictions, not the inverse. So I've made those, excuse me, those arguments over the years. Back to Mr. Burris, Councilman Burris's initial question. So I've been writing the SAFE grant application since, I believe, 2018, and I have been successful getting that money every single year. I believe the highest was seventy-five thousand. We generally speaking will average about forty-five thousand. That was a letdown this year, eighteen thousand four hundred dollars. That's a huge letdown. The JAG Board did the exact same thing with the JAG LLE grant. That's federal monies that are funneled to the state, and then the state gets to decide what they do through grant application process. So they started that same process several years ago where, wait a minute, we've already given you money for five years straight. And I said, well, you're holding it against me because I follow the rules? You're holding that against my agency because I write a good application, and you're going to put me on the bottom? And they said, yes. So I'm not going to sit here and pretend that I know all the answers to all the questions about all the board rules. I just know how it is.
Be curious what their criteria was to be awarded it, for them to be able to do that, but that's just my thing.
If I'm not mistaken, this year's SAFE grant, I think total awarded funds was two-point-eight million. Now granted, that's for the entire state, so they made a decision somehow, and actually, I feel very fortunate that we do have eighteen thousand four hundred dollars to supplement our violent crime over time and our community involvement over time.
Well, hopefully next year we move back up a notch.
Hope so. Anything else?
Thank you for being diligent and seeking those additional funds year after year. Appreciate it.
Do we have a motion a second?
Yes, sir.
All right, roll call.
Ginn?
Yes.
Hebbeth White?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Hatchet?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes. Item D, accept Oklahoma Internet Crimes Against Children MOU.
Motion to accept Oklahoma Internet Crimes Against Children MOU.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, this is where the misplaced discussion should have been aimed at. There's just so much of this that, gosh, we trust our local people, OSBI, federal, state, tribal, and other law enforcement agencies that have signed this document. That would include agencies from which we might find some good officers, and they may get here and they go, oh, gosh, I'm glad I'm not working in that town now. You should see how that department is, and here we've got a bright and shiny department, and there's somebody back at that not bright and shiny department that's going to have access to stuff and we're going to share databases with. And other parts of this, all task force members shall contribute case information for inclusion to one or more common databases, and it seemed like there was a spot where probably the chain of command and supervision is responsible for policy and whatnot, and we must agree to standardization in policies just because of this matter. And is there a dollar value of this that comes our way by participation, or is it just the value of going, okay, we're going to take some of our good people and let them have some coordination time and learn more about what needs to be done to eradicate these kind of problems?
I can't give you a definitive answer on the financial question. It could, could be held against us for grant applications not being involved with an Internet Crimes MOU with OSBI. That's potential.
Though OSBI might say, Chickasha, we offered you this, and you didn't take it, therefore that's the next step to get these other kinds of cooperation from OSBI.
No, I don't see that. I've called OSBI numerous times, day and night. They will always respond.
Okay.
This, sir, if you look at the purpose on page one, the purpose of the MOU is to outline the relationship between the participating agencies. That's basically putting their scaler in writing, and the next section down includes investigator supervisors from various local, state, tribal facilities. All participating acknowledge the task force is a joint operation with all agencies. The chain of command and supervision of the OSBI ICAC unit is responsible for the policy and direction of the task force. We have our own policies. We're not going to violate our own policies, but with the MOU, we have to know what their policies are, too.
Okay.
Bottom line is, we cannot, with a one person currently, a one-person detectives unit, properly investigate Internet Crimes Against Children. We have got to have an avenue where we can reach out to other agencies who know what they're doing, who have all the state-of-the-art information that we need. That's what this MOU allows us to do.
Is, Chief, is this the first time that our town's been involved with this?
I don't believe so. I cannot give you a definitive answer on that.
Okay. Thank you for answering my questions, and let me fuss about it, council members.
Chief Music, do we already have, with reopening the detective division, do we already have officers that are willing to move up into that place?
Yes, ma'am, that's Detective Sergeant Scott Ely.
I'm sorry.
Detective Sergeant Scott Ely.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you, Chief.
Roll call.
Hebbeth White?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Burris?
No.
Hatchet?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes. Item E, accept property use agreement between City of Chickasha and Willowbrook, Inc.
I make a motion that we accept the property use agreement between the City of Chickasha and Willowbrook, Inc.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, do you kind of have an explanation for, I guess the way I'm seeing it through the council packet here, it looks like school's got a project, we got a trusted local source that's helping them do the project, they've run into the need for some additional space nearby, and as a community, we own some land nearby, so we're just kind of shaking hands with, hey, it's okay for you guys to use this, and the words licensing just kind of means, hey, we're giving you permission, just about like, maybe my neighbor would let me park on their driveway if I had a lot of extra people over for Thanksgiving. Is it kind of that simple?
That's my understanding, yes.
Yes.
Okay. It was a pretty wordy agreement with it. All that to say, I think our agreement says that we would require the construction company to name the city as a lost payee.
Right.
But in all the paperwork, and there's a lot of paperwork here, I didn't see that, that we are.
It is, sir, it's on the certificate of liability insurance in there.
You see it on the certificate?
Yeah.
Council, have a page number?
Page number forty-one of two oh four, under six insurance requirements. Yeah, so six point two.
Yeah, I circled that, but I don't see it on the policy that came along with it. Wouldn't the city normally appear somewhere on that policy if they're an additional insured?
We can watch for that. If it's approved, we can watch for that to be added and request that additional certificate liability insurance to be reassured.
I'm certainly for the cooperation.
Yes, this looks like just to be the standard one they have without any additional information. I'm sure that's something they can add pretty easy.
Maybe the page fifty-eight of two oh four has a place for it.
Mr. Councilmember, if I may, if you would like the motion to reflect that the approval is contingent on that requirement, you can certainly do so.
amended motions? Who made the motion?
Motion was made by John Smith and seconded by Eric Alexander.
I'll go ahead and amend my motion to include the City of Chickasha as a payee on the liability policy.
Second.
On this project.
Motion a second, any more discussion? Roll call.
Smith?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Hatchet?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Hebbeth White?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes. Sorry, Jessica, I didn't know if you had something you wanted to say or not. I didn't even know you- Yes. Sorry, Jessica, I didn't know if you had something you wanted to say or not. I didn't even know you were standing there. You're good? Okay. All right, we'll go on to six A, public hearing to discuss the preliminary and final plats for Sage Brush Villas located at northeast corner of-
We need to do G first.
Sorry?
G.
Oh.
With the corrected typo, we're in a motion to, it was pulled as well.
No, we didn't pull it, he just, in, in its original motion, he-
It was part of the first vote.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I thought it was pulled out separately.
Yeah.
Well, is it taken care of?
I'm not above making mistakes.
Amanda and I were on the same page there, we both thought it was pulled out.
I was clueless, so there we go. All right, now, six A, public hearing to discuss the preliminary and final plats for Sage Brush Villas located at northeast corner of North Grand Ave and East Ada Cypel Ave. It is seven o'clock, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing.
Lance Mills with Cedar Creek Consulting, one one seven hundred South County Line Road, Oklahoma City. Mayor, council members, I appreciate your time tonight. I'm here as the engineer of record to answer or address any questions or concerns you might have on the preliminary or the final plat.
To a layman's thought process that knows the community a little bit, how would we drive to this? Would this be very near our Best Western on Grand Avenue?
Yes, yeah, so the Best Western, the drive that goes back to the other subdivision?
Yes.
So that is a public road, public drive there. And then Ramsey Road, that's partially built for the existing duplex subdivision, would be extended towards the fairgrounds for this subdivision, with the ultimate intent to tie into a road that the fairgrounds is currently planning.
That would actually be access to the fairgrounds someday?
That, that is in discussion with, with the fairgrounds.
Okay.
And, and the intent. If not, the right of way does circle all the way around.
So this addition would kinda mirror the existing addition and just be just a little bit to the north?
Yes, sir.
And a little bit to the west of the-
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody have any other questions?
Thank you. Yes, sir.
We don't have anything else, it's seven oh two, I'd like to close the public hearing. We'll go on to six B. Discussion consideration of possible action to approve the preliminary and final plat for Sage Brush Villas.
Make a motion that we approve the preliminary and final plat for Sage Brush Villas.
Second.
Discussion.
Question, Mr. Mayor, maybe, maybe at the wrong time. Does the city foresee any public space in the future of that area? Those units are pretty close together. And I'm not aware of any public space that is basically off the sidewalk or out of the As it gets more densely populated right there. Yeah. I didn't know about the fairgrounds' potential road, or if there was any open area that might be coming along with these developments that happen out there.
Well, Council Mayor, Jessica Green, Community Development Director. The developer has an area where they're planning on putting like a basketball court or a common area for the kids in the future.
At another time, so this-
I believe once they start the, the construction process, that will be included in that part of the construction.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Is that something that would be approved later on, though, if we, if that's something we're approving right now, or without there being a common area? Can you clarify that for me? Yes.
Did you hear my question? I'm sorry, I was thinking out loud, but not really phrasing a question.
Let me look, it should be on the plat already. Let me find it in here. Do you know where exactly where it's at on here? Okay. I can't read hard, it's hard to read on this little map.
Is that it on the north?
So, back here, so that's the rear of the lot, this triangle here, that triangle there, access to that.
Okay.
And then it's adjacent to this corner, which will be the ride.
Southwest corner, John.
So it's gonna be towards your back of, like here is like the circle, and there's an access right here, and it's gonna be in the very back, back here. There's that area right here, towards the back, and then another area that hooks up to the other common area that's there.
Okay.
Looks like a, nearly a quarter of an acre.
I believe so, yes.
Thank you, Jessica.
Do we have any more discussion? We have a motion in a second, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes.
Roll call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Hatchet?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Hebbeth White?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes. Item C, public hearing to discuss the consideration of zoning, five twenty South Seventeenth Street from R one to C one for applicants Esteban and Colette Sandwell.
It is seven oh seven, let's open the public hearing.
Hello, Ginn. So this was passed by Planning Commission on November twelfth. We didn't have any negative or positive feedback on it from any citizens around that area. Planning passed it, it's good to go, so with y'all's approval.
This is replacing where that laundry mat was for so long, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
With that being said, how would the laundry mat have operated there well before I ever moved here and have a designation of residential one?
Unless it was grandfathered down or something? Maybe, I mean, I don't, I don't know how to answer that question, 'cause I don't know the, how the zoning map was prior to me coming.
That building is-
I know that laundry mat has been there at least sixty-five years. So, it's been there a long time.
But that is the exact spot.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Are the applicants owners of that property?
Yes.
Okay. I had, this is a good time for us to discuss this, Mr. Mayor. Should I be waiting until we were about to vote on it, or?
No, this is discussion.
Okay. But because of that question, I, I had a person with property within the three hundred feet mention, and they, they had a lot more history than I do, that the area was to receive interest for a convenience store at one time, and I think this body, years ago, maybe ten to twenty, said, oh, no, no, there's too much traffic in that area for, for that kind of a change to be made. So I, I didn't know what kinda concerns-
I, I think there's a big difference between a meat market and a convenience store, you know, with the traffic, because convenience stores, more than likely, you're gonna have gas pumps.
But we're seeing a little something extra on the application. Plus, would there be a difference once the designation is made to commercial? Would it be applicable that a convenience store could operate in that zone?
Well, exactly. Any, anytime where you rezone to commercial, that opens up a, I don't wanna call it a can of worms, but I'll call it a can of worms. It opens it up as a can of worms. Now it's commercial, they can basically do whatever they want to in there, as long as-
It would still have to come-
As long as the city approves it, so.
And it's just for that, that plot of land, right? Just what they're-
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not the whole block, it's just that-
No, it's just for where the laundry mat was. Their goal is to have kids from the high school be able to walk over there and get tacos and also have the meat market there.
The, the building to the north, across the alley, used to be a neighborhood grocery store. It was Wright's Grocery back in the day. And so I'm sure it's zoned residential also. But, yeah. I'm excited about it myself.
I also had a concern, Mr. Mayor. I spoke with the party within the three hundred feet and verified their name exactly, their address exactly, and that person told me that they checked every bit of mail and that they did not receive notice. Isn't it our procedures other than just to list them in a publication to also, would they receive some kind of a postcard?
They would have received a notice of hearing for the public hearing that went before the Planning Commission. We go off of what the people that bring in from the abstract, an abstract list of the three hundred feet, people, people are around that area within that three hundred feet.
Are those return receipt requested?
No, we just mailed them regular mail.
And that's done, those, that list is given to the applicant by the abstracting company, right?
Yes, sir.
It's not something they just go and draw a circle around a map and just write the addresses, right?
It's a certified from the abstract office.
So officially, they didn't receive notice?
I mean, by what you're saying, yes, but it was, sounds like to me is a failure of the abstracting company, if they were within the three hundred feet, to add their address.
Their, their name's in here.
Well, they didn't receive it, though?
Yeah, they didn't receive anything by mail.
Did you say it was certified mail? No, it's certified from the abstract office, the list that we receive, and then we mail the notice of hearing. We haven't received any mail, returned mail back from that. It would have been put in the folder. We haven't received anything back.
So that was probably a USPS delivery issue.
It happens. Sometimes.
Mostly when I mail bills off, they get lost.
That's unfortunate.
And sign checks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? All right, it's seven twelve, I'll close the public hearing. Six D, discussion consideration of possible action to approve ordinance twenty-five dash twelve, zoning request five twenty, uh, five twenty South Seventeenth for applicants Esteban and Colette Sandwell.
Make a motion that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twelve as presented.
Second.
Discussion.
Not liking notice is a big deal. I don't know how council would have felt if that person were to come to the public hearing and go, I didn't receive notice, would we get technical and go, oh, but it was printed in a newspaper somewhere within the county? So-
I definitely understand where you're coming from, but on the flip side of that coin, if the applicants followed and checked every box they were supposed to, and it's not due to their lack of effort, same thing, like they did what they're supposed to, the process should move forward. You know what I'm saying? It wasn't that they didn't do what they were supposed to, they did all the steps they were supposed to as well. And unfortunately, it sounds like USPS didn't deliver it. That's outside of their control.
Could be.
Could be, yeah. I mean, we're speculating at this point.
Could be.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Burris?
I'm staying.
Hatchet?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Hebbeth White?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes. Item six E, discussion consideration of possible action to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty R and authorize the mayor to issue and the election proclamation as a resolution of the mayor and council of the City of Chickasha, Grady County, State of Oklahoma, calling for a nonpartisan regular election of the, for the purpose of electing officers of the City of Chickasha, setting a date for said election, setting the filing period for the purpose of allowing qualified candidates to file declaration of candidacy, setting forth the qualifications of office and setting the final presentment date to the county election board and setting a final date of publication.
So moved.
Second.
You gonna say all that?
You did a perfect job, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hatchet?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Hebbeth White?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes. Item six F, discussion consideration of possible action to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-two R, amending the city charter for the City of Chickasha as follows. Amending Article fourteen, Section three to increase the contract amount for public improvements and maintenance of the public property, requiring competitive bidding, bidding to the amount set forth in Oklahoma Competitive Bidding Act, Oklahoma State's Title, Oklahoma Statute Title sixty-one, Sections one oh one, as amended and providing for servability, requiring approval of charter amendment by the majority of registered voters voting at a nonpartisan general municipal election scheduled for April seventh, twenty twenty-six, as provided by law, providing that a copy of the resolution along with the election proclamation be delivered to the Grady County Election Board Secretary at least seventy-five days prior to said election and fixing an effective date.
Make a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-two R as presented.
Second.
Discussion.
Questions, Mr. Mayor, what does it mean? What, what are the amounts? Is it an amount that we're talking about changing?
Yes.
And we couldn't list it?
It's, Amanda-
Mr. Mayor, council members, if I may, right now, our charter provides for competitive bidding at thirty-five hundred dollars. Currently, state law provides for competitive bidding at one hundred thousand dollars. The reason that we did not list out specifically the amount is because state law changes, and we want to be consistent with state law. So rather than having to come back and change the charter again, this says that we're gonna be consistent with whatever state law says competitive bidding is.
Effectively, if approved, the protection, for whatever reason it was put in the charter, from folks smarter than me, and everybody knows that, it's going to change from thirty-five hundred dollars to we won't scrutinize anything with competitive bidding until it equals a hundred thousand dollars plus in the future. If the state changes that, we will ride that crest to whatever the state determines. Is that understanding you in layman's terms?
Yes, if, if you all approve this, and if the voters approve this, we would stay consistent with state law, yes.
This is just approving to put it on the ballot, so.
And let the, and let the people decide?
Correct.
But are we fairly gonna let the people decide what it is, or are we just gonna kinda hide it like it's hidden in this? And really, I had to come to the meeting and ask a question to find out, they were going, you mean, we're going from thirty-five hundred dollars to a hundred thousand dollars? That's a big change in a lot of people's lives.
When was the charter written?
That's, that's what I was gonna say, I, I imagine-
I mean, thirty-five hundred dollars when the charter was written is probably comparable to a hundred thousand dollars today.
Well, it's probably what the state was at that time also.
Right.
So I don't have the historical information in front of me, but yes, that is my understanding, is that I believe the charter was written sometime maybe in the fifties, don't hold me to that, but quite, quite a few years ago. And my understanding is that it was comparable to state law requirements and that, you know, the state law has increased over the years with, you know, various items increasing in cost.
Would you say at this point, with us having the thirty-five hundred dollar restriction, it slows us down to be able, I mean, what is the restriction?
Chief T agrees, yes. Chief Music agrees, yes.
I would defer to city personnel.
So I would like to hear from the people that it is affecting, that it's, you know-
Well, we also gotta remember that any expenditure still has to fall within budget.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? They, they can't just go out and buy whatever they want regardless of what we're allowing here, that has to fall within budget, or we have to do a budget amendment.
That's what I say, are we losing out on projects because it is having to go for competitive bidding for us, whereas other, a lot of other places aren't, because ours is set so low that we're having-
I'm not even necessarily losing out on projects, but any project we wanna do takes twice as long.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Well, just say we gotta replace a main valve, maybe buy a valve-
Well, and how many times, there's been a couple of times, just since I've been on council, where we've had to dismiss all bids because they weren't correct. And so then that has- And so then that has then drug it out even longer.
I just feel like this is taking something away from the people of our community that are counting on us to protect their liberties, and handing it over to the state of Oklahoma, or whatever aspect of the state we would watch for this new number that may grow beyond $100,000.
I kinda gotta disagree with you there, Charlie, we're literally, this will approve the people to be able to vote on whether to do or not. They're literally the ones who are gonna say yes or no.
Right.
It's completely in their hands.
And to me, if it does pass, it's giving, instead of micromanaging to me a little bit, our city leaders and city manager more liberty to order things within our budget that's needed in a more timely manner.
Which serves our citizen faster.
All right, I agree.
It's definitely a complaint that's not uncommon, is the slow-moving nature of city business.
If we give a little longer leash to the city government, to the city budget, or to city officials, we're growing government and not people.
Like I said, this will put it out for the people to see what they want.
Let's not put it out there unless we explain it better than it's written here. It may pass for attorneys and whatnot, but I don't think there'd be a handful of citizens that could've taken what we were presented in this packet and made an explanation like we received here.
I just did a simple Google search and figured out what state.
But I don't think that the ballot language can read any differently than this, because we can't be specific in the ballot language, or we'll be in the same boat. If we, the ballot language will need to read that we will be consistent with state statute. Otherwise, the state raises it again, and we're back here again, having the same conversation. Now, in the material put out to the public about what the election is for, it can be clarified there. Whatever, you know, what the city puts out as far as these are gonna be on the ballot.
Do we have a motion to second?
Yes, sir.
Roll call.
Ginn?
Yes.
Hebbelthwait?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Burris?
No.
Hatchet?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes. Item G, Discussion and Consideration of Possible Action to Approve an Election Proclamation, calling for and proclaiming that on the 7th day of April 2026, a regular election will be held, and it will be submitted to the qualified and acting electors residing then to corporate limits of said city. The matter of an approval or disapproval of a charter amendment set forth in Resolution 2025-32R, to wit, shall Article 14, Section 3 of the Charter of the City of Chickasha be amended and revised to, herein to read as follows. Public improvements and maintenance of public property may be made by the city government itself or by contract. The city council shall award all contracts for public improvements and maintenance of the public property in compliance with the requirements of Oklahoma Competitive Bidding Act, codified at Title 61, Oklahoma Statute, Section 101. As amended, all bids may be rejected, and further notice of opportunity for competitive bidding may be given.
Make a motion to approve Item 6G as presented.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, what's the goal and the purpose of this one, and how does it relate to what we just discussed?
Mr. Mayor, if I may. The resolution was where you were approving for this to go before the people for a vote, and in the resolution, it says that it will actually be done by election proclamation, so this is really just step two.
So one was approving it, and this is actually approving it to go into proclamation, but we're making a proclamation at this point?
You're proclaiming it, yes.
Proclaiming it.
That it will go before a vote of the people, it'll be on the ballot.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Hebbelthwait?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Burris?
No.
Hatchet?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes. Item 6H, Discussion and Consideration of Possible Action to Approve Resolution Number 2025-33R to authorize publication, public sale, and public auction pursuant to 64OS, Sections 1081 and 1082, for oil and gas mining leases for oil and gas development, covering the real properties in Section 10, Township 8 North, Range 9 West, Cattle County, Oklahoma, and more specifically set forth in the resolution.
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-33R as presented.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recuse myself on these oil and gas matters, and I will be leaving my seat. If somebody will kindly let me know when we're not discussing oil and gas matters, I will re-enter the room.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Smith?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Hatchet?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Hebbelthwait?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes. Item 6I, Discussion and Consideration of Possible Action to Approve an Oil and Gas Lease with Hermitage Holdings LLC for the following public auction pursuant to Title 64, Sections 1081, 1082, for the following described property. Section 28, Township 7 North, Range 7 West, Lot 19-22, Block 26, Chickasha Old Town Edition, containing .4936 net mineral acres, more or less. The north, 151.25 minutes, Lot 24, Block 38, Chickasha Old Town Edition, containing .0925 net mineral acres, more or less. The north, 151.25 minutes, Lots 25 and 26, Block 38, Chickasha Old Town Edition, containing .3701 net mineral acres, more or less. Section 33, Township 7 North, Range 7 West, Lot 4, Block 306, Chickasha Old Town Edition, containing .5143 net mineral acres, more or less. Block 217, Chickasha Old Town Edition, containing .9085 net mineral acres, more or less. The north, 42nd minute, Lot 1, Block 1, of Elliot's First Edition, containing .197 net mineral acres, more or less. Blocks 236, 263, Chickasha Old Town Edition, containing .1081 net mineral acres, more or less. The east, 15th minute, Lot 7, Block 3, Highland Park Edition, containing .0708 net mineral acres, more or less, including all adjacent streets, alleys, roadways, easements, and rights of right-of-way's. Opportunit here too, as shown on the official record plat. Therefore, all transactions described above, all being located in Grady County, Oklahoma.
Make a motion that we approve an oil and gas lease with Hermitage Holdings LLC.
Second.
Discussion?
Are these the leases that were bid on meeting before last?
The first half of them, with one company. We had two companies bid, this is one company, yes.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Hatchet?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Hebbelthwait?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes. Thank you. Should've brought my glasses. All right, Item J, Discussion and Consideration of Possible Action to Approve Master Agreement with Professional Services with Park Hill.
Make a motion that we approve a master agreement for professional services with Park Hill.
Second.
Discussion? All right, roll call.
Burris?
Yes.
Hatchet?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Hebbelthwait?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes. Item 7, Motion for Adjournment.
So moved.
For adjourned, I'd like to call the Chickasha Municipal Authority to Order, and a roll call, please.
Hatchet?
Here.
Ginn?
Here.
Hebbelthwait?
Here.
Smith?
Present.
Alexander?
Here.
Burris?
Here.
Grayson?
Here. Item 2, Consent Docket?
Motion to approve Consent Docket is presented.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Hatchet?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Hebbelthwait?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes. Item 4A, Discussion and Consideration of Possible Action to Approve an Oil and Gas Lease with Hermitage Holdings LLC following public auction pursuant to Title 64, Sections 1081, 1082, for the following described property. Section 28, Township 7 North, Range 7 West, the west, 6.5 minutes, Lot 10, Block 28, Chickasha Old Town Edition, containing .0321 net mineral acres, more or less, together with all roads, alleyways, easements, rights of ways. Opportunit here too, as shown on the official record plat thereof, located in Grady County, Oklahoma.
Move, we approve oil and gas lease with Hermitage Holdings as presented.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if you'd let me recuse myself and leave the room, get about your business.
Okay.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Ginn?
Yes.
Hebbelthwait?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Hatchet?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes. Thank you, John. Didn't know you were gonna get your steps in today. Item 5, Motion for Adjournment.
So moved. Second.
I'd like to call the Chickasha Municipal Airport Authority to Order, like a roll call, please.
Hatchet?
Here.
Ginn?
Here.
Hebbelthwait?
Here.
Smith?
Present.
Alexander?
Here.
Burris?
Here.
Grayson?
Here. Item 2, Consent Docket?
Motion to approve Consent Docket is presented.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Hatchet?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Hebbelthwait?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes, Item 4, Motion for Adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Don't see any of you, if I don't see you guys again for Christmas, have a Merry Christmas, thank you for coming. For adjourned.